We understand that the area is owned industrial. I guess we would need a conditional use permit to be able to park vehicles there. Or maybe look into a zoning change, I'm not sure. But that's what we're looking to do. We've been talking to the owners of the property. They're interested in selling the property. But I didn't want to start, you know, taking their time and opening escrow or moving too fast until I know that we would be able to park the vehicles there. Because I know that's the main concern.
Could you point out the whole area? We have little...
Pointer.
I don't have a clue with me, but pretty much the boundary decided like this. And this is possibly used to be occupied by the Oracle piping company, which is really the business. It's a site in itself and the company, I make it very specific. One thing that we have to do, actually, in the process is that because of the level of truck, in the current term, it is considered a truck terminal. The truck terminal is not familiar in that zone. So we would have to record a memo to actually allow the use of office building accessible to the public. However, because of the level of truck that we expect to deny, it's about different classifications.
So right now the site is vacant?
Right now the site is, the way you see it, it's just abandoned buildings. Some of them are still being used partially for some small businesses and they are closing off the existing facilities for the commercial. Practically there's no sign of it right now. It's under one.
There's one tenant there.
You're trying to use the whole site?
Yeah, but the tenant that's operating out of there right now uses a very small portion of the property. He asked if he could stay. I didn't really have an issue with it. He doesn't seem to be bothering anybody else right now.
But you guys would use most of all the facility?
Yeah, we would be using the majority of the site.
So no trash, no vehicles will be there with trash and its contents, right?
No, they come empty every day.
All right. And then when you have big huge trash, sorry about the big huge trash, then will you be storing them there?
We'll be storing those there as well.
With no trash?
With no trash.
Could you look at the drainage issue? I guess it's on the south end. Because I know a lot of the residents have always got issues with their home because of the drains on this side.
Oh yeah, definitely. And there's a clarifier on the property that looked like it was filled, but I'd also be looking at getting a clarifier. You know, I mean, there's a lot of strict codes and regulations that we have to remember. So, I mean, the property would be very well maintained.
How many trucks are we talking about, you know, containers?
Containers, it varies. But, you know, we have approximately 2,000 containers or so, but they're primarily out on job sites. So in stock, we usually say about 10%, maybe 200 of the most that we give them time that might sell the property. Trucks, approximately 54 trucks that would be at the property. And, you know, they leave at various times. But the property that we're operating at right now, we've been there for approximately 12 years. And there's homes right across the street. To this day, we haven't bought any. In fact, it's, this is a little bit better than where we are now.
I want to know about your, I'm sorry, I'm not in the business. Can you explain about the cleanup of the trucks? I mean, you're saying that there isn't any smell, but I'm just curious to know how you guys maintain them, keep them clean? Because at some point, right, after having fashioned it for so long, I'm just curious about the cleanup process.
We use a, right now, we're contracted with a company that comes and cleans trucks for us. But then they do water renovation. So they reclaim the water that they use from cleaning. As far as smells go, outside of the truck, it's not going to smell. Inside of the truck, obviously, within the body. But the body doesn't get washed on the inside. The smell's contained. All our trucks have lids on it. We don't open the back doors and start cleaning out the inside of the body because that really causes a smell. And if we ever do, for maintenance reasons, then we usually take it to a truck wash out in Pico Rivera, and we have it done man. So we don't do that on-site.
Even though you said that you did not sell or had any intention of selling, because it happens, have you at any time had any negotiations that you approached by Athens to do business with them at any capacity?
No, not by Athens. I mean, I've been approached by a lot of different companies. You know, I'll be honest.
Societary or Athens?
Not a societary Athens, no. They don't really like me too much, so I don't think they would knock on my door. I'm looking at the workers, obviously. So, yeah, they won't, they won't. And there won't be any material, you know, run through the facility. I mean, we're not going to dump it, even recycling, dry material, anything like that. We don't, we wouldn't use the property that way. It's just for parking our vehicles, having our corporate office. It's just to have our home base. We don't have any plans in the future to build any kind of recycling facility or anything like that. That is not real.
All right, any other further questions? So of course, we're not going to form an opinion now. So this is going over the plan.
No, actually, what we would do actually, depending on the results of the council, we will come back to the restatement session on the code amendment proposal to show the results that this one done to happen. And what do you want to do as a confirmation to that code amendment? And then we will be able to move forward to the next.
All right, sounds good. All right, thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move along. The next presentation of the proposed Hampton. And this is great. I think fourteen six two garden area, five times a bit something. Come on, gentlemen, let's get those shoulders. All right.
Yes, we have the same venue, not personally.
Oh.
Your poker face, your poker face.
Yeah, there's that.
Thank you very much.
You know where, you know where it was? It was a tiny truck. It was a big one. What the hell would jump here?
Is that done?
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us here. I'll try to be brief, be brilliant, and be gone. So originally, we had thought about putting a Hampton Inn hotel here. I'm sorry, this is town fan. I'm with CRU Real Estate. Originally, we had requested approval from Hilton Hotel for putting a hotel here at this man. But unfortunately, the last minute denied us. So we have a different proposal, dark hotel here. Part of our hotel division will speak more about our proposal. And then we also have ten from Fort Penex. We will talk more about the hotel design aspect of it. I'm going to be real quick, give you a brief overview of our company. We're a real estate group. We're located on the coast of Mesa, California. We're local here. We do a lot of projects in-state and out-of-state. We have our real estate group, our real estate advisory, our management group, investments, and our technology company, too. Our goal is to manage assets. We're mainly in the hospitality industry. We don't do partner building to anything else. Hospitality is our key. We offer, in the hospitality segment, we have our management team. It's all in-house. Everything is done in-house. We're one of, we're acting on 110 top third-party management companies across the whole country for hospitality. We've been in a lot of hospitality magazines. We've done, we've been Wyndham approved, Marriott approved, Hilton approved, IHG, which is Holiday Inn, Crown Plaza, Backbeat Two. And that makes up almost 55% of the US hotel market in the branded chain side. Give you an idea, again, here's some of the hotel chains that we've worked with, Best Western, Best Value, all over the country. Here's our property management, revenue yield management, asset management, operations, sales, marketing, accounting. All of this done on the coast of Mesa. We have regional managers that fly to sites all across the country, some of the brands, some of the products we work with, some of the properties, give you an idea of what type of product we put out there. We're not, you know, your Motel Six type of operator. We try to do a higher product, a cleaner product. We do a lot of urban development stuff. And here's some of the different locations that we have properties currently or have had properties all across the whole United States. This is our proposed project that we're looking to do here, the type of level of property that we want to put. This is a Home Two Suites. It's a new property by Hilton. Hilton's fastest and largest growing extended state property. Very urban, very contemporary. Does not have a restaurant, could serve food. Does not compete against any of the restaurants in the local area. Has some small meeting space, gives you an idea of the decor in the room. Very, very modern, contemporary look. This is the proposed layout that we have on the site. The actual site is on Dalewood. So I think there's a typo on the packet, but it's on Dalewood, yeah. Adjacent here is our biggest challenge. We have the Regency Hotel. This was originally proposed as a Hampton. Hampton turned this site down because of this location here. They're willing to take a look at it as a Home Two Suites because they're growing that product line. They really want to have presence in Southern California. They don't have any Home Two Suites new builds in Southern California. They're not doing conversions either. So they're not taking all properties and making them into Home Two Suites. It has to be a new build. So San Diego, Los Angeles, San Francisco, and I think San Luis Obispo, four sites that they targeted and that are signed, but that are going to be constructed in 2000 in the next eight to 12 months. Beyond that, they're going to be signing more. They have 150 properties in line. That's because of our relationship with them. They know what type of product we put up. They are considering this site for a Home Two Suite product. Our biggest hurdle, again, the property next door. TripAdvisor has a lot of crime, health, security issues at that building. And I'm not going to go into, you guys can read it for yourself. It's very bad, you know? I've talked to some people in the neighborhood that we know that have lived in the neighborhood for 20, 30 years. And they've told us the facility next to us is basically prostitution and drugs, you know? And it's a lower income type of property. Around this property, behind our site, is a newly, recently developed assisted living center. Really nice property. Across the street from the Regency is a mortuary, really nice property. Across the way from us is a brand-new Jack-in-the-Box, which is recently done, really nice property. So I can see, you know, the site has value, but you have one major eyesore, you know? So if you guys, you know, this is a planning issue. If you guys can do something with that other site, we wouldn't even be interested in purchasing that other site from the current person. Maybe building a second hotel in our location. But that current site is very much an eyesore. So we're hoping to get it approved by Home Two Suites for this project. Right now, currently, it would lay out a 93-room property, Kenny, is that correct? Yeah, 93-room property and with a parking at 88 spots with four handicap. Eighty-nine, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Eighty-nine spots with four handicap, a pool, four stories, a lot of common amenities with some small meeting space. We're not trying to compete with the Marriott across the way. We know the people who own the Marriott. We do business with people that own the Marriott. They have tons of meeting space, and we love that fact that they have meeting space. They serve a different market than we would serve for this product. Theirs is the courtyard product, Marriott residential's product. Different type of chain. Hilton is a different type of chain. This is more of an extended state. All of the rooms have a mini kitchen in them. They'll have like a wet bar in them. It's more for the families, more for the teens. People who are going to stay four, five, six days in the area, not the quick one-two-day traveler, you know? Obviously, we get a lot of business clients that stay in the area. They stay, go to LA, go to Ontario, visit three, four different clients over three, four days. That's the type of traveler we're looking for. So our crime rate at these properties is very low because of the type of customers we have. It's consistent business, and they're eating and staying in your community. They're staying for four to five, six days. They're going to serve and bring additional revenue to the adjacent properties next door, you know? So we're looking to put in a product that'll facilitate a lot of different value to the city, but at the same time, really bring a nice product. You know, we don't want to just bring out. Nothing wrong with Motel Six or Best Western or some other type of bars. We could do that, you know? But we feel that in urban LA, the site off the 10 freeway, it brings a lot of visibility to the city.
Can you share like the average of room?
Yeah, this is in your product. Nationally, the RevPAR, which is occupancy and daily rate, is $85 RevPAR. So approximately, say you're charging $110, $115 a night, you're getting 70% occupancy. That gives you that RevPAR of $85 a night based on national numbers for Hilton. This is not a full-service Hilton restaurant and everything, so we're not going to be charging $200 bucks a night or anything like that. But it is a higher-end product. The Marriott across the street, I think their RevPAR right now is about $128 in RevPAR. So they're in a different classification than we would be. Their average room night, Monday through Thursday, is $179, $180 a night, you know? Obviously, they have more to offer. They have Starbucks, they have a restaurant inside, they have a lot of meeting space, you know? So they have more common amenities. We're more of your extended state, lower price, but still giving value in product.
Now, have you approached the facility next door?
No, we haven't, you know? It was, we went by there this weekend, and it was very rough. We drove the parking lot. There was a homeless person with his mattress parked in the back with that trash bin. There was some construction going on there. I don't know if they, you know, what they were doing, but they were doing it in the parking lot. And, you know, it was just, it wasn't...
It was a little scary. So you saw the mattress outside in the back and, you know, barbed wires and that.
If someone there, if they, who permits for construction, because they've been doing some type of remodeling at their, I know that part. So we could check into that.
Concerned with the history behind that hotel? Or, you know, how long that contains to change that?
The unfortunate part, we don't have eminent domain. It no longer exists, state of California. I mean, this is probably the only thing we, I don't know what we can do. Our part, maybe assist them in approaching the owners to see if they're open to making selling in a particular part or not.
Yeah, if they are, we would definitely be interested, you know? The part, the lot to this side of this cutout right here is also, we've also approached them to ask them about purchasing this lot. They do not want to sell.
Is it the auto place?
Uh, no, it's a vacant lot here. The auto lot, a lot is further down here. But there's a vacant lot here. We approached them, they're not interested in selling. They want to build a retail center. There's some type of retail police center.
Right.
Yeah.
So your purchase is what, a neighbor or half?
One point five line, yes.
Do you know the owners of this site here?
Yes, yes, the bank already owns, yeah.
Well, right now, is bank owned?
Yes, correct. There was a restaurant there before. The restaurant did not be there, the bar.
So you guys bought it or the bank owns it?
The bank owns it, we're in negotiation with them right now.
You're negotiating?
Yes.
They're asking for a very short escrow period. So it's going to be a lot, a big risk on our part to purchase this. We'll probably make that assessment. We can give you support.
You know, I know we can't do anything with the property next door. So for this site, we have to do extra security. We have to do a barrier around the property, some type of gated type of maybe entrance or stuff like that. I grew up in Long Beach. I grew up in a hard neighborhood. We've had a hotel in a, you know, a drug area, too. So I know what it's like. Not to say there's anything wrong with those properties. If you run them right, you can run them right and run them clean. But, you know, we don't promote that. We never did on our properties, you know? So we had a lot of harbor workers, people staying like that. They were great clients of ours, you know? And every season, they keep coming back to our property. It's just that property next door is not promoting itself in the right way. And you, the TripAdvisor stuff, where people write about it, you guys will see it, you know? So I mean, we would do this. We need some kind of concession from the city. Concessions that we're looking for are maybe on parking requirements a little bit, maybe on some TOT for our additional cost and overhead that we have to cover. You know, Kenny, can you think of any structural issues?
Well, I think planning the target required a $100 minimum.
That's correct.
Yeah, the site is very limited to space, so it's hard to get.
This site actually is so for this type of use, or if it's student or that type of quality, you know? We really need to see that if I'm a junior holder. The reason why we did the issue about the number of rooms is because if that site came out, it could have been a property site. So there is a balance between the number of rooms. Or certainly, we would want to...
Well, the code requires a hundred rooms. What are you proposing?
Right now, with this site, the way it is, for this type of product, we're at 93. Yeah, and so we have looked at another product. We've discussed with Holiday Inn, who we have like four properties locally with them, and they are considering this site. But again, they're, before, as soon as I mentioned their site, they're like, oh yeah, that's the next Regency Hotel. So they've already seen it three or four times and turned it down.
So the Hampton Inn is interesting.
Yeah, Hilton for Home Two Suites products, yeah.
So there are 95 units here, 189 apartments, business plus four.
Yes, right now, it's 93, 88, and four handicap.
The one in Hilton, I saw the map, it's right off of the 10 freeway, isn't it? And it's fairly new?
The one in Hilton, they renovated several times.
Oh, but it is off of the 10 freeway, isn't it?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so some of the, that's an older box property that we renovated and brought into a higher standard, yeah.
I saw that the signs says Home and Comprehensive Student.
Yeah.
How do you know what it was?
Yeah, they have a Homewood product, they have a Home Two Suites product. Hilton is, within a hotel chain, we have about 10 to 15 different products from various basic hotels, all the way to four or five-star hotels.
Are you in this department or this? I want to say it is one type of room. I'm not, I'm not ready. Which is interesting. So it's, I mean, it's not easy to set up these sort of... Can you ask, is there any personal questions?
So parking's based on TOT, chance of tax, you know? Because it's a little bit of a risk for us to put this type of product next to a product like that, you know? So you're looking at a three, four-star type of contemporary look next to a product that's very aged and, you know?
Do you want to share what you're thinking about TOT, or is that still the model?
Well, based on the model, we were hoping for, you know, a five-year TOT exemption. And that's something that you would have to consider, you know? It is aggressive, but we feel that it's going to take about two and a half to three years to ramp this hotel up, you know? The first year, when you build a hotel, you introduce it. The second year, you try to get repeat customers to come back. And the third year is really when you get your legs, you know? So it's going to take about 18 months for this project, once you get approval, to get this thing going. And then, you know, another three years to run it up. So we're looking at that five-year window.
So we anticipate a loss?
The first couple of years, if we break even, we'll be happy, you know?
So a five-year, and then a six-year, and then thereafter?
Then after that, normal TOT tax for whatever the city wants, you know?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sure, should I just leave?
I just need a second.
Sure. I'm going to leave my party. In case you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
That can be more negotiated. My boy, you're in a long haul. You know, I appreciate it. I think the history behind every little stuff like this is very, very interesting to me. I like all the searches, through all the old codes and everything. And it's very interesting, very interesting.
Because I know that, I know that it's a lot of work, but I know that it's appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just love getting stuff from you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Oh, no, 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 thank you. This was a request that was asked. It was to talk about used automobile sales, primarily looking at one property within the FC zone just south of the freeway. However, what I'm going to do is, in the table that I gave to you here, I provided a history of automobile sales in the city of Balden Park since back at like incorporation. Pretty much, used automobile sales up until most currently in the current code has either been a permitted use way back in the day or a conditionally permitted use, and that started in 1981. With our new code, we eliminated used automobile sales within the FC zone. However, we do allow used auto sales with a conditional use permit in the I and IC zones. I can't, yes, ma'am? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had one. No. Oh, okay. That's, I was like, oh my god. So before our new code came into effect a couple of years ago, I can't say that in our old code, we did allow used automobile sales with a conditional use permit. What happened in that transition with a comprehensive code update when you're looking at everything? I don't have any. So, I did also want to let you know, if the council does direct us to do that, it would probably take about three to four months to complete. And that would be from beginning to city council hearing and then the additional couple 30 days maybe for implementation for the ordinance to become effective. I don't know at this point how many used automobile sale uses we have in the city. Unfortunately, the business license system we have does not have a separate category for used auto sales. It's all lumped into miscellaneous services along with a lot of other things. However, I can tell you that the planning commission a couple of months ago did approve a conditionally used permit for a used automobile sales facility on Arrow Highway. It's Victory Auto Sales, and it's west of Maine. So with that, one of the things that Mark and I were talking about is the council does desire is that we can come back with some development standards. And development standards can relate to not only signage. We do have some signage requirements. Now we can look at signage, display area, how the display area typically relates to automobile repair, which is generally associated with automobile sales facilities. You know, the percentage, like, since it would be a secondary use and things like that.
I think we approach the council, so we're sort of about that type of use. So that's why we do not do it. So to embrace some general standards to ensure that we're certain quantity.
I think that's so important, I think that's the past.
Absolutely.
And then we've had some where else.
And I think it's one year important year today because, you know, we didn't want to, you know, screw it up.
I think one of them being rated, I mean, that's kind of, that was a unique case. But one of them was rated for, you know?
Yes.
So, you know, the history of auto, used auto sale or less is kind of a real positive for me.
I think, you know, we need to have sort of a minimal size for the free area. Whether that you're displaying versus the office is also proportional to, you know, with the car. And whether or not we want to put out next to it. We can have to be on-site for this app. And that should be accessible, you know? That's really important to be discussed.
Let's, for a general ordinance or their proposal?
This is true, allowing used auto.
Right, this would be, should the council direct us, would be to allow used automobile sales within the freeway commercial zone. Right now, that's... Yeah, only within that zone. We allow new use, I'm sorry, new automobile sales with a conditional use permit in the zone. But used automobile sales is a permitted use.
Why don't we now, when we look to talk new sales?
And then we have to, you know, include the truck. It also, and the capital E, is that the new car use, used to be, is likely to be included after three years. So we usually just see one here, and then the left here, the same street, and same mall, and same area.
Similar to what you see in West Covina when you're driving to eastward on the 10.
Just to bring everyone to the park. 20 years ago, when I was in the city council, we had Auto Nation. Those were the ones that came into the actual Starbucks, in the Walmart area. And then I guess they kind of went down and they pulled out. But we had this huge, that we got in that style of Walmart.
We got Walmart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or the Saturn.
Saturn, Saturn was the same with Saturn, yes.
I see the Saturn's like sort of helped bring us out
A key to Saturn is like, sort of helped bring this up because the owner there, it would bring in the automobile there.
There is the same site where the Saturn was.
And the older version is perfectly acceptable, what the used automobile is.
I have questions about, I don't know, how much can you regulate the cars? You know, I guess you guys would know versus like old. A roll hat, yeah, because I've seen some really, I think right when I got off the freeway on, on Arrow, you see some that have like, even chalk on them and it's just, they just don't look very appealing, you know? And so how do you regulate that?
And then we, when we talk about developments there, we're going to have to cover, to discuss such all this area. One thing we're talking about, we want to make sure, for instance, just an example, they will not allow to, to be, especially people who are repair facilities. And then anybody that could not, I mean, be on, when the vehicle is a little bit, you know, for sale.
Right.
That's not, that's not.
That's not the.
The intent is to have, how did ever certain, where you, of a, of a certain, of a certain value, you can be for sale. As we call them, as a process and that.
So are we aware of the one that opened up right here now? I, the one you just talked about?
Yeah.
Oh, you guys aware of it? Is that used car?
I'm going to see before.
Yeah, I was like surprised it's not there.
All of a sudden, the cars are all.
Yeah, he actually relocated from the city of Azusa.
I would like to see that.
Okay.
Yes, and you know we spoke in length about the type of cars I do want.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean.
We have tires.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.